Starting with a council workshop to discuss the city manager's search with Don Garrish from Eaton Peabody Consulting Group. So we'll just get started with that.
I guess it's, is it on?
Yes.
It's off.
All right. Well, hello. Thank you for having me back. Just seems like I was just here, but it is what it is. Thank you for the opportunity to work with you all again on your manager's search. Just for the public who maybe don't remember who I am, my name's Don Garrish. I work for Eaton Peabody Consulting Group and I am a retired main manager, had 39 years in the profession. I was in Gorm for 10 years. I retired out of Brunswick after 20 years there in 2009. In the last 14 years, I've worked for Eaton Peabody Consulting Group and I helped communities hire managers, executives throughout the state. Over the last 14 years, we've done over 75 searches. I also do interim work. I've kind of retired from that now and just do searches. And I had the privilege of helping you hire your existing town manager. So I appreciate the opportunity to be back tonight and to start the process looking for a new city manager. I sent to everybody a draft timeline and I also sent a draft ad. This is the same ad that we used last time we did the search, but there are a couple questions need from the council as we start going forward. One of the services I offer, as you remember, is to meet with your department heads and to give the staff an opportunity to give me input into what they're looking for in their new city manager and also what the issues are facing Waterville in the next five years. I also offer, if you'd like, to hold a public session, have the public come in and ask them those same two questions. I sent along, I think you should have, the document that we provided last time by doing it. So I guess the first question for your input is, it's been about two years since I was here. Do you want me to do that again? Do you want me to hold those meetings with your department heads and with the public? Because that is the process that we need to put in the timeline, so.
Okay, if councillors just would raise their hand and we can, Brian?
I think that we should do the exact same thing. I think transparency is key and I think that everyone having an opportunity, their voice heard of who is going to be in this position, I think needs to be, I think their voices need to be heard. So I don't think we should deviate at all with what we've done in the past and we should go forward.
Anyone else?
That's fine. I can put that within the context of our timeline and set up a time to come up and we will set up a public meeting. Usually I try to do the public meeting the same day as I meet with your department heads. And just as a reminder, there will be an email link on the notice that anybody that can't be here or any of the staff that want to give me their input, they can email me that and I'll include it in the document that I do.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Thank you. How will this, how does that affect the timeline? Does it affect the timeline in any way?
If, it doesn't if you use the same ad. If you want to wait till after we get input from the department heads and staff, it would by a week or so. But I think, you know, based on what you put out last time, I think it's the same type of qualities that you want, the same things you're looking for. So it really won't extend the timeline. I know it's a tight timeline and I'll go over it, but it won't if we can just agree to the ad.
Thank you very much.
So we'll plan on, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, the public meeting would be held before we look at applications, right? But the department head interviews, that would be with the candidates themselves?
Well, no, I will do interviews with the candidate, excuse me, with the department heads, one-on-one, as I did last year. It's a confidential what I hear, what, who says what, but I will write down what I hear. And it'll be just similar to what we did last time. You'll get comments, starts to paint a picture of what people are thinking, helps the candidates, helps the council, what you're doing. At the end of the process, once we go through the process, and I'll go through it, once we have finalists, usually we narrow it down to two finalists, maybe three. Sometimes we only have one, but to give the department heads an opportunity to meet the finalists. And it gives the finalists an opportunity to talk with the department heads, which is positive. I sit in on those interviews. When the candidate leaves, I ask the department heads, they don't get to vote, like we want this person or that person, it's just giving me their input, what they, what do they like or do they have any concerns. After those, I will present that information to the council before you have a final interview, similar to what we did last time. So that would be the plan.
Okay, but those, just with regard to the timeline, those two meetings would happen the same day anyway, so it's.
Yeah, that will be within the next two weeks.
Okay.
Yep. I'll schedule that with Brian in his office and I'll come up and do those.
Okay.
And we'll put a notice out, like there's a draft notice that you can put out to let the public know about the public meeting. We'll have my email on it and it'll be similar to what we did last time. The advertisement, last time we advertised the Maine Municipal Association, ICMA, New Hampshire Municipal League and the Massachusetts Municipal League. I think those are the best ones. You get the national ad out through ICMA. And then for the New England one, Massachusetts, New Hampshire are probably the best ones to advertise. So I, if that's okay, that's where I'll advertise this year for the position. If we can get, we'll go over the ad in just a minute, but if we can get that approved, the plan is to start advertising next Tuesday for the ad. We will give about a month, four weeks for the ad. So the deadline of the applications will be back on March 25th. You will, as you remember, will get copies of a notebook with all the resumes in them. You will have an opportunity to see all of them. There will be a memo in there that I will recommend certain ones I think you should consider, but again, you will be able to look at all of them. Anybody that I recommend, well, I shouldn't say, I do a background check on, a preliminary background check on all of them. I all look through them, but anybody I recommend, I will have talked to to make sure, either if I don't know them, I will talk to them to make sure I feel comfortable recommending them to you. You'll get those on Thursday, the 27th of March, and then the week of March 31st through April 3rd, we'll meet, as we did in executive session. We'll go over all the resumes. You will decide who you would like to interview. From there, we will schedule the first round of interviews the week of April 7th through the 10th. That may be two days, depending on the number and the quality that we get. I will provide the council with draft questions that you can change or add to, but I give you draft questions to help you move along. The week of the 7th through the 10th, we'll do interviews. And then after that, we'll narrow down the candidates to two finalists, three finalists, however we have. And then have a second round of interviews on April 21st through the 24th. That's the schedule. That would be when they have an opportunity to meet with the department heads and then meet with the council. After that, I will do complete background checks on the finalists, educational, financial and criminal background checks. I also talk to references, not only the ones they give us, but other ones. And you'll have a full background check on all of the finalists. After that, you make a decision who you would like to offer the position to. We negotiate a contract. That's something I offer. I did it last time. I do it most of the time. And that's the week of April 28th through the 2nd, so that we're looking on having someone named May 5th through the 9th. So that's as quick a time as we can work to get this moving. Now, the caveat always is, if we get good candidates and we have, feel comfortable with them and we move forward with them. As you all know, my fee is a flat fee for doing the job. If we have to go back out again, my fee does not change. I'm here to hire somebody. There may be some additional costs for advertising, but other than that, we're here to go through the process and find you a new manager. So that, in essence, is the timeline. Does anybody have any questions about that? I think it's as quickly but efficiently a good timeline to get someone as soon as we can. So, does any questions about that? I'd be glad to answer them.
I got one.
Go ahead.
So, Mr. Garrish, how many, let's just say, in the last five years, or, yeah, how many searches like this have you conducted? Or I guess what I'm really trying to get at is, how often do you have scrubbed searches? So you alluded to having to go back to the, to the field. And in particular, I want to know how many scrub searches you've had in recent history, just to get a sense of what the market is like.
City of Lewiston, we went through it. We did one advertisement. We got eight applications. We went back out. Three weeks later, we got another 12 applications, but we had four excellent candidates. So we didn't get it the first time. We went back out and got four great candidates. Other than that, recently, I haven't been back out. Gardner, I just went out and we were able to go through it the first time. Cape Elizabeth, the first time. Yarmouth, the first time. Union, the first time. I haven't, the only one recently, in the last two years that I've had to go back out, was Lewiston. Before that, there hasn't been, three and a half years ago, I did Gardner. We went out twice. But the other ones have, usually, we can find, the process works pretty good, but it's really depending on the candidates that we get. I just can't dictate what we get or how many we get.
Well, I guess there's three people that didn't take the job in Lewiston, so.
That's true. That's true. Okay, any other questions? If we could take a look at the ad, I didn't really change it. I've got to change the numbers about the popular, not population, but the budget and everything, but I can get those from the office. The rest of the information, I think, is pretty accurate of what you're looking for, what the skill set and that works out. The only other change I made was in the salary requirement. I'm recommending you advertise 140 to 175. I think that's more appropriate for a community your size. I think right now, your manager's earning around $160,000, if I'm not incorrect. So I think that range is a good range for a community your size and to attract good candidates. So that's the range I think you should put in there. So I did change it from what it was last time.
Yeah.
Any other questions? If you're okay with this and I make some changes in the, in just the numbers about your budget and everything, we can get this out and get moving right away and see what, where we are. And I will, like I said, schedule my meeting to come up and meet with staff and the public, so.
All right. Is everyone comfortable with the salary range? Yeah?
I have no issue.
Okay. Anything else? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity and I look forward to working with all of you again. And as I tell everybody, it's, it's not always the person with the most experience or the person with the most education is the person that fits your community. And that's what we're looking for. And we'll work hard to find that person. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll now move into the regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have an opportunity to do so during the public comments section of the agenda for up to three minutes. All right. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, liberating, and merciful.
All right. Disclosure of conflicts of interest. Anything on the agenda tonight that would pose a conflict? Seeing none, we will move on to the city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. We met with Andy McPherson, our city engineer, this past week to talk about our plan for 2025 downtown vision projects. And our project goals are going to include mainly two projects. The first is going to be turning Lower Appleton Street into two-way traffic and we are going to have a council session to talk about that, but that was part of the downtown vision plan. And also there, there will be streetscape improvements, including light poles, trees, plantings and some other elements. In addition, we're hoping to make substantial progress on the Art Walk, running from Castangue Square to Temple Street. The other projects considered, including the Spring Street pedestrian enhancements, as well as the Silver Street Pedestrian Mall, we'll probably have to wait until 2026 to do other ongoing construction projects in those areas. The bridge, for example, there are some things happening there. They're not going to allow us to complete those improvements right now. And then on Silver Street, the construction of the former, last Unicorn Building is going to be ongoing through next spring and summer. So that's going to put us back a little bit there. So the goal for '25 is to really get moving on those two projects, Lower Appleton Street two-way and also the Art Walk. So two exciting projects and I hope to make some, some good progress there in the next few months and then it will be carried forward, hopefully to be completed this year in '25. We did also meet with Waterville Creeds to discuss a new public art project. They're looking at for Levine's Park. There'll be an upcoming council presentation on that, but it's kind of interesting and rather exciting and this would be a more permanent display that they're proposing. So we'll have them at a council meeting sometime in the next few meetings. The Impact Task Force, we have some more applicants in. We're going to have some more appointments for our March 4th meeting and hope to get that committee seated and meeting shortly after that. I'd say by early to mid-March. I think we still may have one or two seats available. So if you are interested in volunteering, please let us know in city administration and we will direct you in the right direction. A reminder, the Kennebec Water District Board of Trustees does have a vacancy. We have received two interested applicants there and our city clerk has forwarded those applications out to the council. For your review, this is a council appointment. And so our March 4th agenda will include this item also for that appointment. The Head of Falls Village Project, you may have noticed, you may have seen the stories in the media, has kind of officially begun. Demolition has started. We do expect this work to continue through the winter and spring. The buildings along Temple Street over here will be up next. As remediation work is completed, they will, they will be demolished and all this fencing has gone up around the property also. My next city manager's open office hours will be March 3rd from 3:30 to 5:30 here in this room. Of course, all Waterville residents, business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns or anything else you'd like to tell me. And I'm also going to be having another session on March 19th at the Muskie Center during their lunchtime, 11 to 12:30. That's, again, that's March 19th at the Muskie Center, 11 to 12:30. Just a couple of quick reminders. Of course, the new city hall hours, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM. So far, so good there. We are always looking for volunteers to help staff our warming shelter. If you are interested there, please get in touch with Teresa Crawford, the Fire Department or city administration. And if you haven't already, please enroll in our mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreewords.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go on to councillor comments, I just want to welcome our youth council member tonight and invite you to tell us your name and anything you'd like to say about your work on the council.
My name is Taylor Muso. I wasn't able to attend the last youth council meeting, but as far as I know, we're still working on our collaboration with the Alphonde to do their career fair. We were thinking about adding like a volunteer opportunities there. And we're also thinking about like a more independent project, but that's still in the works. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Councillor comments or committee reports?
Yes, go ahead.
So I just have a comment. So the soup kitchen is also looking for volunteers. So I was there today and, yeah, there's a lot of sickness going around. So they are looking for volunteers. So if anybody in the community would like to volunteer. And also too, there between Augusta and Waterville. So yeah, I just wanted to just let everybody know that, you know, that is happening here in Waterville as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? I guess I'll just make a comment that, and we spoke about this a little bit, but I think it would be great to have the Director of the MidMaine Homeless Shelter come in and just give us a summary of what they're seeing there, the numbers, and including, I believe they've actually reversed a lot of overdose situations, which is great. But hopefully, we can get that on the next agenda. Okay. Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Okay, anyone online? Nope, okay. Breasing through to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Great.
Yes.
Roll call?
Yes. Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yeah.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Harard?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to old business.
Could we have a motion to read by title only?
That's right. Thank you.
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Harard?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
Okay.
Now on to old business. Order 50-2025, approved airport land lease, Bel Air Management LLC.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, this is a second reading. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a roll call.
Thank you.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yeah.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Harard?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to order 51, 2025.
Authorize a quitclaim deed for 71 Grove Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, anything, anyone has to say on this item? Nope. Okay.
What's that?
Let's go to a roll call.
Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Harard?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
And next, we have ordinance 52, 2025.
Amend the zoning map, 357 Park Street rezoned.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Just before we go to members of the public, we're all set on council? Okay. Go ahead.
Raphael Scheck, the famous neighbor, I guess. I just, I don't have much to say myself, but I want to ask my other neighbor Nancy Williams to come forward because she has a little bit of a proposal for more green space on the parking lot, which the neighbors support.
I wrote it down. It's in Font 16. It won't take too long. I wanted to be careful what I say.
Nancy, make sure to speak into the microphone. I'd like to hear you.
Thank you. Can you hear me now? Okay.
Yeah, it's a little better.
So we are asking for the council to stand up for our small neighborhood on Park Place. We're asking nothing more than two landscaped areas, one on the corner of Park Street and Park Place, and another at the end of the lot on Park Place. Two parking spaces taken to soften the harshness of barren asphalt. Two landscaped spaces that would go a long way to show that we believe in the importance of community. I've heard that it is the opinion of some that once an ugly parking lot, it should remain an ugly parking lot. Some of you know that I volunteer my time as the Director of Waterville Community Land Trust. We renovate homes in the South End so that lower-income families are able to become homeowners. We believe in the golden rule. We want to provide attractive homes for our new families and attractive yards for the neighbors. It really doesn't take that much to believe that we all should work to improve upon everything we touch. The city should want improvements because attractive neighborhoods attract good citizens. Not to mention, the city needs taxpayers who feel that competing interests are fairly heard and that compromises do happen, even today. I realize that the two historic buildings are going to come down. I did my best to try to save one of them. I researched land where they could be moved. I contacted and received quotes from two house-moving companies. I contacted two nearby landowners with land where the little duplex could have been moved. They were unwilling to sell the land, unfortunately, and such a shame. We could have moved the duplex and provided two starter homes for very little money to two new families in Waterville. I am left feeling that we didn't talk enough to each other. I'm disappointed that I know that we all want the best for our properties, including the church, for which I am very grateful there is a parish that cares for it. I hope that we all want the best for each other as well. I believe that considering what is being lost, two historic buildings, five apartments, that two landscaped areas is not too much to ask. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. I appreciate your comments. I, I believe that what we have to vote on tonight is what came to us from the planning board. So I'm not sure that we are in a position to make this happen, but the pastor of the church is sitting here, and this seems like a, whoops. All right. That was for you. You were well within your three minutes. You know, this is something that can be discussed, and I'm wondering why it wasn't brought to the Planning Board meeting where this plan was drawn up. It seems a little late in the game now. This is the second reading. So.
I believe that there was a, well, if your planning board person is here, perhaps she can address. There was.
Please come to the microphone, Nancy. I'm sorry that I'm not there. I just need to be able to hear.
I think Ann Beveridge is here, but I believe that there was in the plan at least one softened landscaped area on the corner of Park Place and Park Street, and that was taken out of the plan. So that was part of a proposal, but it wasn't supported probably because there was a feeling that there would be a loss of one parking space. Well, my understanding is that the direction, the two-way direction also was changed to one, which I think is an improvement. I think it's a safety improvement, and I have nothing against that. I think it's fine. I could see right away that that was an improvement. But you know, the cars are coming in potentially onto Park Place, taking a right angle turn to get into a perpendicular parking space. That's not usually very easy to do. In fact, impossible to do if you're coming from downtown and turning, right? So it doesn't seem like it would be a huge loss to the church if they were willing to be good neighbors. We'd like to be neighbors too, to put a nice landscaped area there and then add another larger landscaped area next to our neighbor Bobby and Larkin, so that there's a nicer area. There's enough maybe for a larger tree, something attractive. It's two parking spaces out of two houses lost, five apartments lost, and I believe they gained quite a few new spaces. And I'm not trying to take spaces away necessarily, but, you know, we know and we're grateful that the church is doing so well. And we know that the parking is not going to be adequate even with the additional spaces gained for the church on Sundays, and I'm glad for that. So it does seem like two spaces, just two.
Right. Again, I'm not, I'm not sure that that's it within the purview of the council to make that determination tonight. Ann, would you like to speak?
Yeah, certainly. You certainly have the authority to send this back to the planning board if you wish. It's just, it's a question of what your will is at this point. The plan that's with the ordinance is part of the ordinance, but as the ordinance can be revised, so can the plan.
Okay.
By me?
You know, I'm going to speak first. Thank you. This has, this has been a very long process. It started over, maybe over a year, maybe a year and a half ago, with the request from the council for the neighbors and the church to find a compromise. And obviously, that wasn't easy. But there's been, there's been a lot of discussion on back and forth on numerous occasions. We've sent this back already at least once or twice to the planning board. I do not think that, I do not want to send this back again. And I understand your disappointment. I would love to see more green space there as well. But this is, this is the compromise that was reached, and at some point, we have to move on. And so I'm happy to hear from other members of the council, but that's my position. Counsel Klepak?
Well, the pastors in the, in the room there, how amenable are they to this recommendation? Is it, I mean, is it something that we can reach a friendly agreement with here and continue to move forward as we all want to, or what?
Do you wish to speak to that?
Yeah, to me, it seems like a reasonable request if we can work it all out.
It would have been a reasonable request several months ago. It would have been a reasonable request at every planning board meeting that we have attended. It would have been a reasonable request where presented, not at the last moment. Bill Lee was asked to bring us to a compromise with the city engineer in our engineering firm. We did that. We are now, at the end of a long process, having been agreed to by the planning board and already had passed the first reading. So now, a late entry to a second reading, I think, is going to force this issue into a place that probably no one wants it to go. So I think we should just proceed as planned. I don't think it's true that there's no green space. I think she's misreading the plan.
Well, it's certainly within your power to, to work with her on providing some more.
Nancy is always welcome in my office.
Well, that may be. That, that wasn't what I suggested. But if you, if you are amenable to that, then you, you certainly are. She's made an overture, and you're certainly welcome to, to take that up.
She's welcome in my office, and we can talk it over.
Okay.
Sure, of course.
All right. Any other counselors wish to speak?
I am. So I have a concern with that. I think that I'm in favor to send it back to the planning board just because of this conversation that we just had right now. And I think we should have it on record. If he is going to talk to her, to Nancy, why not send it back to the planning board and actually have it documented then? Because I feel like that it's not going to happen. And I understand we're in the second reading, but I feel like two parking spots for some trees, I think it's, it's a reasonable request.
I think, yeah, I think it's, it's late in the game, but we should put it to a vote.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like it's a compromise, it's a back-and-forth compromising until we get to a point where both sides are satisfied. And I think right now, what I'm hearing is that the, that the residents are still not satisfied. And with some green space, I think that would make a compromise right down the middle. I mean, that's just how I feel.
I think, I think that's true. I guess, I guess I have to say that this process is, is not efficient. We had a planning board hearing, and, and that proposal could have been brought to the planning board, and that could have been voted in. And also, this, you know, the city, anyway, that's all I have to say. Did you want to add something?
Yes, please. I understand your unwillingness to send it back to the planning board. I'm not advocating. I just want to make the point that what happened in the planning board meeting, or this is the way I recall, anyway, the planning board asked the church and our city engineer to go out and discuss this in the hallway. So when the planning board approved a plan, they didn't have the actual plan. Jeff Allen said that he had revised the plan as our city engineer had encouraged him to do. And then, when he realized that parking spaces would be removed, the church said that they didn't want to lose parking places. So that, that was the point. They went out into the hallway, and Andy told them, well, they could add some parking places to that particular design. So the point I'm making is that the planning board did not approve an actual plan that was in front of them. It was the concept that the church and our engineer had reached an agreement without a plan in front of them. So I just wanted to make that point. I'm not trying to advocate one way or the other.
Well, okay. So what we have on the table before us is a vote, second, second vote to approve the plan as it was presented to us by the planning board, and I think we need to go to a vote. Unless there are any final. Nope. Okay.
So this vote is for finality?
Yes, it is. Approving the plan.
I'm sorry. Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
No.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Harard?
No.
Vote is three in favor and two opposed.
Not sure if that's, is that two-thirds? Two-thirds of a vote?
It's three-fifths of a vote. That's 60%. There's not two-thirds, no.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to new business. Well, there's no, there's no.
If someone's speaking, can they speak at the mic?
The question was, is it being sent back to the planning board? Brian, can you weigh in on this? Or Patty?
I believe that this is a two-thirds vote.
That's what we're talking about.
Okay.
So it did require two-thirds.
Yes.
And we did not achieve two-thirds. We got three-fifths.
So the motion failed.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so can I put a motion to send it back to the planning board? How does that work?
That would have been prior to the vote.
You'd have to wave.
We could reconsider that last vote, put it back on the floor.
If someone on the prevailing side wants to move to reconsider.
Which is Counsel Gilly, Klepak, or Counsel Green?
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
Are we prevailing though? Because we didn't get the two-thirds there.
Vote on the prevailing side, though.
Yeah. Right, that's true. They voted on the prevailing side, even though it didn't pass.
Okay.
We need some more counselors. What is going on?
So, I mean, I'll make a motion to reconsider the vote, since I was on the prevailing side. I wasn't on the prevailing side.
We have to wave closure first.
No, you don't have to wave closure.
But you, you would have, so your vote would be to, your reconsideration would be to send it back to the planning board.
Well, no, the reconsideration is on the last vote that you just took.
Right.
So if you vote to reconsider, it puts it back on the floor like it was not voted on at all. And then you could move to send something back to the planning board at that point. You could, you could send the whole thing back to the planning board, just as is, or if you, but at this point, you have a motion to reconsider. Do I even have a second for that?
I'll second.
So do you want to vote on the reconsideration to see if it's a moot point, or?
The point of this is to send it back to the planning board. If that's what we're going to do, someone should make a motion to do that.
If they reconsider, they can put it, right, we haven't voted to reconsider yet, so.
You would first need to vote to reconsider, someone on the prevailing side would need to move to reconsider, and there has to be a vote first. That's step one.
So me and Flavia?
Right.
We had a second, but there wasn't a vote yet.
Right.
Correct. So we need a vote.
Correct. We need to vote on the reconsideration, and that will put it back on the floor before the vote you just took.
Okay.
Okay.
Shall I do a roll call, counselor?
Sorry?
Shall I do a roll call?
Do a roll call, okay.
Thank you. This is a motion to reconsider the last vote.
All right.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Sure.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Harard?
Yes.
Vote is four in favor and one opposed.
So now, this is back on the floor prior to the last vote. So if there's another motion that needs to be made other than to adopt it, that can be made now.
So I'm going to motion to send it to the planning board.
Second.
And, and do we need to specifically state why we are putting it back to the planning board in regards to the green space that we had?
I think it would be, it would be wise to talk about a charge given to the planning board to consider X, Y, or Z when it goes back.
So essentially, it was in regards to the green space and in regards to those parking spaces. Am I correct?
Yes.
It would be to make the recommendation upon having an actual plan in front of them as Mrs. Beveridge had suggested.
Are we asking for a plan? Are we asking for a conversation between the parties that are involved?
So, I think, Ann.
We have a plan. The planning board just didn't-
Just built a plan.
So you have a plan.
Right.
And it should be in your packet, or if it isn't, this time it was, last time. So it's a matter of reconsidering that plan to add landscaping, some landscaping along Park Place.
Okay, let's do that, then.
So we use that language.
Exactly what Ann said.
So if I may, the motion would be to send back to the planning board to add landscaping along the public, along Park Place. Is that correct?
Sure. Yes.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay.
Are we ready for a vote, counselor? Or is there discussion, or?
Yeah. All right.
I mean, obviously, this is, you know, I understand what's happening. We, this has been a conversation for a long time, but hopefully, that we can, we can get this taken care of, and we can have some type of compromise or agreement, and we can call this a day, so.
I agree.
All right. Let's go to a roll call.
Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
No.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is three in favor and two opposed.
Was that a simple majority vote, Patty?
That passes with a simple majority to go back to the planning board. You only need the two-thirds vote to amend the zoning ordinance.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay. Oops. So, moving on to new business.
Resolution 54-2025 authorized the renewal of a special amusement permit to Charles Gigier doing business as Silver Street Tavern.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay.
All set? Counselor Gilli?
Yes.
Counselor DeBrito?
Yes.
Counselor Klepak?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 55-2025.
Refer to the planning board zoning amendment, planning board membership.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so this proposal is to add alternate members to the planning board because we're having trouble finding a quorum for meetings? Do I have that right? Yep.
I believe that's the genesis of it, right?
Okay. My concern with this is that people who volunteer to serve know that, what the expectations are, and they should be able to meet them. And I'm afraid that if we have more people attending meetings, that's really going to diffuse the body that's making very important decisions about ordinances in our city. So I'm not in favor of this, but happy to entertain other positions.
Flavia, please. I'm in the same lines. And the reason is, it's because it's an elected position, and I'm really trying to have, I'm having a hard time, like, how would this alternate position, like, how would that be? How would that be like? So I'm a little bit not opposing.
Just to clarify, this is a mayoral appointment, these positions.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, like, the Water District is elected, but these are mayoral appointments.
Okay, thank you.
I agree with both of you. I think that, you know, we all make a decision, we all make a decision to serve the city, and I think that we need to, we need to meet that responsibility, so. I, too, am not in favor of this.
All right. Any other comments? Counselor Klepak?
Yeah, I, ultimately, I agree, but I think it needs to be recognized that the position of this position is, you know, there's a lot of community service that any individual can do in their community, but this one in particular is, can be pretty onerous to be able to do it correctly, right? I mean, there's a lot of stuff that you have to, paying attention to, and to really live up to the potential of the position, it requires more than just, you know, showing up to meet quorum or whatever. And so, you know, it can be hard to get people to want to be in this role, right? It's, it's, there's a lot of, you know, very, you know, capable individuals in Waterville, but if you're a capable individual, you're probably pretty busy otherwise, right? And so I do applaud the attempt to try to figure out, not, to me, it's not just about how we meet quorum, it's how we attract people that, you know, can make the most of the opportunity of being a city counselor. And, you know, sometimes it is, we've all had conflicts and times when it's difficult for us to be here. If we weren't going to meet, if we weren't going to meet quorum without me, I wouldn't even be on this meeting right now. There's a number of other things I would be attending to. So, you know, recognizing that, you know, I think it is a good thing to think about, figuring out how to, like, lower the barriers to access to this kind of service. And what I mean by that is simply making room for people who have complicated lives, difficult lives, where the commitment to service is, can be challenging to have it be consistent in perpetuity every other Tuesday, you know, or every first and third Tuesday of the month, or whatever. So, you know, I agree with my other counselors, you know, I don't, I don't know if the alternate is the right solution, but, I mean, we can't, I don't think we can dismiss it out of hand, because more than just meeting quorum, there are other issues to be, to think about here. I mean, if I think about Ward III, am I going to be doing this till I die? You know, this is a, this is a ward where it can be a little bit hard to recruit people to be on the council. So thinking about ways of making it so that more people would consider this kind of service for their community is a smart thing to do in terms of the general health of municipal democracy.
So I'm wondering if it's a matter of making it less onerous to serve and making the expectations clear from the beginning? Because, you know, we're in elected positions, of course, but we, we know that we're expected to be here first and third Tuesdays. I don't believe the planning board meets, usually, it's once a month, isn't that, isn't that right? Okay.
Yeah.
The regularly scheduled meetings are the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month. And sometimes, the developers aren't prepared, so we don't, we don't have a meeting. Sometimes, we have way too many items on the agenda because everybody's ready at once, and honestly, I have a hard time telling them no, that they have to wait. So part of that is my fault, that the meetings can be very long, but we don't often miss meetings because we lack of quorum. We do, we are missing one meeting this month because of lack of quorum, but that, it's not a really regular thing. I think maybe the mayor was concerned that we are having another very long meeting coming up, and again, it's because I just couldn't say no, so.
But, but when, so, the other thing is, to my knowledge, there's no shortage of people who are interested in this position. We always have candidates who are applying, and we have to say no to people, so. And when they are appointed, surely, they're told what the, what the meeting times are, right? They're told the second and fourth-
They know that, and the mayor has spoken with people who've applied. Before he's appointed them, he's made it clear what their responsibility is.
Okay.
The mayor was suggesting this, by the way.
Can I ask one other question while she's at the podium?
All right, go ahead.
In terms of the, like, detail of work that you have, you know, as it stretches across more than one meeting, how important is it that a person needs to have that continuity of understanding, right? How feasible is it that a person could just drop in at any given meeting and be able to pick up the thread of a story? For example, we just had, here in council, we just had this very long story with, that's been going on for many, many meetings, about, you know, this church or whatever, and if a person was new to that story, they might have a hard time understanding the nuance. How, how much does that kind of thing transfer to the planning board?
The situation is that this language comes from the zoning board of appeals, and the zoning board, which has two alternates, the members are expected to attend all the meetings. It's only, you're there to vote if there aren't enough regular planning board members.
Gotcha.
But people, when the zoning board was meeting on a regular basis, people didn't just come when they're, when they were needed, they were expected to attend all the meetings, too.
So, so we would be expecting more people to attend meetings, but not vote? That seems onerous to me, honestly, to do all the work and show up and maybe vote, maybe not. Any other comments? All right, let's take, take a roll.
Counselor Gilli?
No.
Counselor DeBrito?
No.
Counselor Klepak?
No, I don't think so.
Counselor Green?
No.
Counselor Harad?
No.
The vote is zero in favor and five opposed.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 56-2025.
Approval of EMS collection agency policy.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, Chief Frost is here to tell us about this one.
Good evening. So in November, we decided to go with Empire Collections Agency, and at that point in time, we had talked about coming up with a policy that worked for the city of Waterville. So that is what is before you tonight, is the policy that Deputy Chief Everett Flannery, QMC, and Empire Collections has come up with.
And could you just summarize it for people who may not have, have it in front of them?
So basically, what we're looking at is, this is, we'll set forth standardized parameters through QMC and our collections agency, Empire Collections. Basically, QMC and Empire Collections will work together. We do not really have to deal with it all unless it comes back to us in the end. But basically, the account has to be $500 or more and greater than 120 days old. This is if the account is sitting at QMC. So if it's over 500, greater than 120 days, it gets kicked over to Empire Collections. Any accounts identified with third, with possible third-party liability will not be sent to Collections. And as we spoke, basically, if it's in litigation, if it's a car accident, if it's in the lawyer's hands, we obviously don't want to send it over to Empire Collections. We want QMC to hold on to that, because QMC charges us 4% and Empire Collections charges us 30. So that just makes sense as far as business goes. And Waterville residents' accounts, as per mailing address, and any account that is $499 or less will not be sent to Empire Collections. And I just want to, we always, we say "collections," right? And I know after this last meeting, we had "collections" was a pretty bad word. This agency, Empire Collections, all this agency does is they take, after 120 days, QMC, they kick it back to us, they're done dealing with it. They don't have, number one, they don't have the manpower, number two, we're turning out calls left and right. So after 120 days, they want to kick it back to us. Empire Collections, what they do is they take this open ambulance account, and they try to receive the money for us. It does not go on their credit reports, it doesn't do anything like that. Basically, it's, they're trying to get hold of the account owner to see if there's a way that we can, can help them out. Maybe we don't have the right address, maybe we don't have the right telephone numbers, but they're going to try their best to help this person and to help us out. I don't remember, what's a timeframe that Empire Collections keeps that?
To work an account?
Yeah.
They've worked it up to a year.
So Empire Collections will then work it up to a year. If they don't receive any payment after a year- If they don't receive any payment after a year, they will then kick it back to us. And then it is up to the city of Waterville to decide what they want to do with that uncollected debt.
Okay. Thank you. So this is an attempt for the city of Waterville to claim some of that revenue that we're missing without-
Correct. How much? I have no idea.
And at no cost to us, so-
I cannot put a number to this. I do not know what this is going to do.
Of what we'll actually collect, but we do, I mean, we have over $500,000 in accounts receivable, basically.
Right. Yeah. We have about $500,000 in uncollected ambulance debt right now. Even if we get some of it back, good for us at that point in time, right? Yeah. We have lots and lots of numbers from QMC, which is our billing agency. They're doing a fantastic job. Our actual revenue per call is up, higher than it's ever been. They work their tails off to get us what we can out of it, so I do appreciate that. This is just, after a certain amount of time, they just have to release it. So this will be another attempt to try to get it. And if it doesn't work, then it'll come back to us and we can, you know, we'll decide what to do with it then.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from councilors? Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Council Gilly?
Yes.
Council DeBrito?
Yes.
Council Klepak?
Yep.
Council Green?
Yes.
Council Harad?
No.
The vote is four in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, council.
Okay. And I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.